Sorry, I'm a colleague. We can't afford to thank you for this opportunity. We have to meet and discuss the town rangers business and to make decisions here. We ask that IceRiot would be with us to help us to make good decisions that are wise for the town rangers and will help this community and the people here in it. And we ask this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. We believe that we are the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
The minutes of the meeting for Dan Ward, twenty seconds. Anybody have any questions?
Can we motion to approve the minutes? Can I say?
Motion, Brad, second by Clayton, to approve the minutes.
Dan Ward, twenty seconds. All of the makers of the public saying aye.
Aye.
All of those saying aye, most have petitions in public input. Anyone want to address the council? Changes to the agenda, Peter?
No changes.
Okay. Okay. No committee or board report? Committee, board view?
Sorry, I thought Mr. Gibson was going to be here tonight.
Okay, well, he gets it a little later.
Just wait a minute.
Supervisor, report. Chief.
I'd like to go on past. I'm letting go through all the calls for service or anything of that nature. You guys have the information. It's about, from year to year, that's where about where we should be at. That's on call service against the norm and where we're at on eight hundred and twenty-five calls for service in the case of maintenance. Though they're about the same, I mean, for the last six, seven years. Could I, Mike, like to address the council. He'll leave on the twenty-second. He'll pay the maybe one client, not happy with the client, maybe one. We have some ongoing testing interviews for my physician. One candidate, thirteen years, or thirteen years of law enforcement from the Department of Public Safety area. Another one started out seven years, five to seven years. They're two top candidates for the one coming for more testing of psychical evaluation, the criminality test and all that. So, Officer Clayton, who was hired, he needs advancing on his criminal training program. And Roy was off for about a week or two then, which he knows. They will be coming back up to do some follow-up. Everything is fine with the air radios. It's just that radios are going into our alarm system. The database does not read it, so that will be what we adapt reporting capable. And once that's happened, we'll be coming up to the eight hundred radio system and doing a few VHSs. Went to a meeting last week up in Meeker to discuss the upgrade in our phone system. And got another meeting Thursday on that. If this does go forward and go through, which I expected, the funding is going to be done from the nine in one board. And there will be no cost to the town on that. Yeah, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In that area, though. Without our fire qualification, January, the use force contact cover, traffic stops, crime scene preservation, body armor, accident safety, verbal kill, these seven categories divided by service on videotape, on EBD for domain purposes. And so, we're going to be done by three, seven on that. But in that, nothing, you know, worry me. These late on, excessive terms, I mean, excellent officer, I have nothing major to say about. You know, he'll be learning that. And so, we'll leave it at that.
Well, I just kind of wanted to come before everybody and just kind of say that I appreciate the opportunity to work with the police department, you know, the town rangers. It's an excellent town. A lot of nice people here. Beautiful area, everything I've had. Late to go, she's just got a better job offer, wishing her on and kind of moving up the ladder to, you know, to more of a supervisor kind of things and stuff like that. So, it's one of those opportunities that we really don't want to pass up for her career. And the biggest thing is, I just wanted to thank all of you for retiring it, for you over and keeping him. He's, just in the short period of time, he's just become a huge part of my life and, you know, being with him, the bone. Until you get to do it, you know, the bones, I just wonder what kind of bones deal with the, with the cannon and this, you know, trained and willing to put his life on line for yours. And, you know, help you out and always be there for you. So, it's a, it's a big honor to be able to have done it. I thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to be the cannon man and working him and everything. And I just, I really can't tell you how, how much it means to me, to give it to a teacher. And take it with me. So, I don't know why I kept turning up.
This is making me cry.
But I said, I mean, this is, you know, this is different than having a dog as a pet. And, you know, but he's going out healthy and he gets to go with me. So, this is one that really takes things, you know, I truly appreciate it, to be a teacher.
Well, I think I can speak for everyone else also. We really appreciate what you've done for the town. And we think it's best for you and for him to be together because at his age, he's not going to, it just wouldn't be fair to him. And so, you guys have a good friendship.
Yeah, we, we bond pretty good in, you know, the couple of years I have. And, you know, he's just, he's just become a part of the life. And, you know, it didn't take him very long to grow, for her to get attached to him. I tell you, sometimes he seems more protective of her than, you know, does of me. You know, just things at the, at the house and stuff like that. If she goes anywhere in the house, he follows her. If I go anywhere in the house, he stays with her. So, I don't know if you left all the treats she's given him or what. She buys his love or something like that.
Well, I heard her rejected the friend as well, and what he is.
But it's been, it's been a wonderful experience working him and learning a lot about, you know, being a cannon officer and working with CRI and stuff like that. There's, there's a lot of work to it, a lot more work than I had originally, you know, thought there would be, but it's been worth it. You know, just maintaining their training and keep them and keep them up on their abilities and stuff. And it's just, it's, it's really cool to watch them work. Going to very junction, watching all the other dogs and stuff and just seeing how smart they are and what they can do. So, again, I just wanted to thank you guys for everything and for your support of the police department and everything that you guys have done for us. So, it's well appreciated and hopefully, you know, thanks from here, me leaving, you know, a few officers coming in and everything, continue to, and Charlotte just continues to improve.
Well, if you ever change your mind, want to come back.
And we wish both of you well. And I know it's a shame that you guys are a little bit in the area, but we wish you good luck and if you ever come back, yeah, like Elaine said, I think we'll be able to find a place for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see you showed up. Who?
On behalf of the combined veterans of Rio Monca County, Meeker and Range, we, we wanted to show our appreciation for your contribution to the Veterans Memorial Fund. And anyone that donated twenty-five hundred dollars receives one of these fourteen inch moccasins of the memorial. And we're real proud, happy to be of the county ranger, the city council, as one of the contributors that's received the money. So, if you guys want to cut down or help me bring it up, I'd like to present you with this and certificates.
Come up here, it's for everybody.
It's for everybody. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And we have a certificate for the town council. And as individual members, if you would like an individual certificate, our appreciation will also be one for each of the individual. And this is a letter of thanks and if that's turned out as your service capacity, we're real close to our goal.
Good.
We appreciate you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, just back to the agenda, Al.
Hi, Ron.
Hello.
Yes, sir. Oh, I had something else. I'll get right to it and I'm hoping I don't take up too much of your time tonight, so. Since this is about my report, the cold weather's really been giving us quite a bit of fits, not only in our facilities, but also around the top of most residential customers. In light of that, we've been averaging from the last week of, towards the last, for about a six-week period there, we were averaging four to six calls per day from customers dealing with frozen water. And this went on until about a week and a half ago. This week, we had a sewer service call, but that was kind of an isolated issue, but it was still frozen. I've never experienced this in my career where we actually had service lines freeze up that were five feet deep.
Wow.
Well, it's, it's a whole new learning for, for me. So, you know, I grew up in Iowa, but the soils are so different, you know, and that's what I'm doing, you know, basically. So, but even for the crew. And I, I, there's a lot of people that I need to thank that worked and that went above and beyond to help these customers and to work together to try and help these people that really felt helpless because there were a lot of that, wherever you'd call it, ten o'clock at night where people spring leaving their house and it's going over the kitchen floor and they're like, what do I do? But my hat, my hat goes off for Brenda, Vicki, Maryville, Mark, Mark Chilson, Mark Johnson, Tom, Paul and Bill, because they all really just dug in deep and really helped, whether from the office, we called to the customer, how they're going to meet you, all the way out to standing in a ditch when it was snowing and fifteen, twenty degrees below zero, trying to get somebody's water service back, back to staff. So, there's a lot of hard effort that we did that. We muscled through it and we learned a few things. We're going to try and implement these, through some public awareness next year to hopefully remediate these happen on such a regular basis and maybe save residents some extra dollars as well and some harbor.
Also, we don't have a twenty-five hundred dollar.
Well, at least for a four-week window, you know. I commented to my wife this morning, I work forty degrees warmer this morning than hopefully for thirty days ago. So, that's the reason. So, yeah. Um, with that, we've got several projects that are going on as well. And I'm going to kind of go right down the list, but please interrupt me at any time you ask a question. So, right now, we've got confirmation that the Hubert screen to replace the invincible screen is in Houston right now and the schedule, we deliver it within the next couple of weeks. Right now, we're sitting down, we're going through drawings, getting everything ready to go to where we can go ahead and remove that and put in the, the new piece of equipment. So, we don't have a timeline or timeframe yet on how long it's going to take us. We're still trying to piece every little finding that we dealt together, but we're getting closer. Also, within the past three days, we've been working, Peter's been working as well with this all on trying to get our SRF funding for, for the water treatment facility, getting that worked out. And recently, we had a conversation with the Department of Public Health and Environment about our industry new user for the wastewater plant. We haven't heard anything from them. It really seemed like they're slipping their feet, but that's okay since it's a regulatory issue, you know, we gotta, we don't have to spend money because they're slipping their feet, that's okay. But they haven't stated that there's, they have any concerns with the project or how they're presenting it yet. So, we're, we're still feeling confident in that, so. And they're, and it's all in their hands, we're still waiting on it before we can go proceed with the work. So, but we're still, but then on schedule with that. Also, since my last update, Southwest Contracting has begun work on the phase one renovation of the water treatment plant. They mobilized, they set up temporary wall, they've cut out, of course, a little wall for the demolition and they've actually demolished all this, the most of this steel, I'll say ninety-five percent of the steel it used to be, and they're still hammering up the concrete. Took a few photos for you guys to look at here. It's kind of tough to get good photos in there with the lighting and.
Oh, you got a little hair.
But, yeah. And, and you'll notice on the first page, it actually was rolling with a little mini excavator in there with a jack camera, a little backhoe bucket, depending to expedite the process. That unfortunately broke down today, but they're getting it fixed. On page two, though, you'll notice the, the concrete basin, you can see that, that orange corner, that's where that corner that's in there? That's just poor concrete, it's just dumped in there and it just fills in the corner, it's just a filling. When originally, I, these guys have been working on that for, two guys have been working on one of these corners now for seven days. And the concrete's not coming out like you would expect, concrete, it's coming in chunks. It's coming out because the concrete is so hard. We had a structural engineer there last week and we asked her, what's the deal with this? And she did her mathematical calculations and went through her, did her thing, but she came up and said originally the concrete was porous three thousand pound mix, but since it's been underwater, it's been in ideal condition for curing. And she said it's still curing it today. And when she calculated it out, she said it's about an eight to ten thousand pound concrete mixture right now. So, it's extremely, it's extremely strong. But the nice thing is we have not found one crack in that basin. And that concrete looks incredible in these, these two basins there. So, it's kind of a nice thing to see what we're looking at, revitalizing that piece of structure there for a longer period of process, so. Two questions. We've had a few other instances that have caused us some problems. We had an overflow of the preset pond on January sixteenth during that extremely cold weather. Water actually overflowed out of a small overflow pipe and did make to the shoulder of Highway sixty-four and a portion of the shoulder. The issue was isolated, but it was found to be operateric that caused it. But we learned something on that as well, so. And no, no damage were done, so it just took some investigation. Also, we've been dealing with our facilities freezing up. We've had three instances with instance in this cold spell to where our chlorine system froze inside the water plant. Both times our alarm system caught it, but we've got heaters in there that keep that room at an extremely constant temperature, you know, of course, but those heaters weren't able to keep up. We had two auxiliary heaters in there that weren't able to keep up and we're still freezing up our pump, that room, and insulated with an air duct away from the wall. So, we had to go in with heat guns and boss them out. But both were just kind of unusual instances that we had. We also have frozen water lines at our headworks facility of the wastewater plant. We did break one water line inside the building there, but the heaters and everything else are getting stressed so much just from running that if there's a weakness in our media equipment, it's definitely showing up. And we found an awful lot of it. So, we've been progressively working through that, trying to remediate these problems and so far, so good anymore. But it also gives us another, when it comes to winterization, that's a whole new term now for us, when it comes to winterization, and now it's a little more broad.
This was at the intake?
No, this is actually at the wastewater plant, at our, at our headworks. So, I'm sorry if I said intake.
No, I'm not.
But we also, with, with the cold, we had the heating strips on our gasway system broke. They just were overheated, they actually, and they melted the wires and caused the gasway system to freeze up. So, our gasway system had to have quite a bit of maintenance done to it, was actually down for about a two or three day period. So, that was another incident we had. High zone pump, our high zone station, which is a tank above La Mesa, the solar panel up there couldn't keep up because of the frost and ice buildup that was on there and the snow. So, we had to continually go up there and knock the ice off of that thing, but we're working on some remediation for that as well. But these are things that we've never experienced in the past, so this is kind of all, all-new stuff, you know, for this extended period. So, this past week, we've also found a frozen battery. I didn't know batteries could freeze, but it froze and it cracked it. First one I've ever seen. So, I can only hold my hopes, but we got her, we got another one coming in, but it's, it's on one of our dual sites as well, so we had to make some remediations for this cold. So, like I said, we're finding very small things that are, that are very important to the operation of our system that are trying to show themselves, so any little weakness, but that's what I'm saying, we're finding new things to look at when it comes to winterization now, so.
Well, we've been extremely cold, longer than I think I've ever seen.
Yeah, we, we've actually gotten additional phone calls from the National Weather Service asking us on, on a couple of times, what's going on there? We know you guys are bitter cold, but what's, what's your, what's your visual? You know? Okay, it's cold. So, yeah. And lastly, there was, Joseph, you asked me in October, I believe, when we did a, we were talking about our rate structure, you came up asking for some information about residential and commercial, the percentage of these. I gathered that information, but upon gathering that information, it kind of opened up a whole new area for me to kind of look at. Water loss is something that we've all talked about, but it also brought up to where the town has always been, it's, it seems like the residential water usage is always high, higher than what it should be on a state average. But when I have to take out the, the, the commercial user in there, that's not necessarily the case. We're not far off the, the average. But I want to let you know that I'm not done working with that piece of, that, that data. Because as I started working with it, new things opened up to where now, suddenly I'm looking at different avenues. When I do have it complete, I, I do would like to show that to the board because there's some interesting information that came about that frankly, I think is beneficial for you guys to know. So, but I've still got, I talked to Peter a little bit about it, but I've got a few things, like I said, I got tweeted on, I tweeted and something else was on, so. Cool.
Thanks, Al.
Do you want to go ahead and start your report? Al was talking about freezing lines and they had a problem with service line that was kind of misdiagnosed on Hill Street as the owner's, the property owner's problem. Unfortunately, they spent three days trying to free the ice in that particular service line and it became apparent to them at some point that even though we were denying it was our problem, it wasn't the property owner's. They had a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty foot long service line that meandered out of the center of Hill Street to Hawaii. And Paul went through and used their meter that he has to de-dug that's the line and some places it came only about four foot deep. Anyway, in the process, the owner took matters as it was on hand, and said to get some, take some action because they evaluated the house and determined the line that were flowing through the house. And so, they, they had to be tired badger to come up, and they fought the hole right next to our curb stop down to the base, which is about six foot deep, so the depth on that particular part of the line was good. And then had, he and Steve Plon come up and he had a newer piece of equipment that he just purchased that allowed him to jet hot water into our side of the service line after the curb stop, of course, wiped out. And they got, they fished that down about a hundred feet and finally freed, freed the line and got some flow to that line. Anyway, in the process, the owners of that problem came and asked, since, you know, we were at that point, admitting it was our, our problem, if, if we covered the cost of those items, and it can just two days if you had to take it off work to try and work that problem. I indicated to them and I felt that we certainly had some obligation to act like that to at least to provide you folks with that issue. It's going to be about two thousand dollars for all of the, the items there to deal with that. We determined that next summer, I guess this has been a problem before they acquired the house, and previous owners, they learned that it just kept the tap open, kept some flow coming all the time, so they didn't have that problem. The new owners did not realize that that was an issue. And we're, we figured out a way to reroute that line towards the high school, once it gets warm enough to do that, so we can allow it to deal with the problem. I'd like to go ahead and take care of our obligation to remain, you know, we didn't officially contract with those services.
I think it's unfair personally. It was our fault again. Like you said, it was misdiagnosed, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody on the crew, but we all make mistakes, but I, I think it's unfair of the individual, but we covered the cost of being here, we're, everybody else.
Thank you. He's asked for two days vacation. Is, is that the way I understand it? He wants us to pay his two days?
He did two days of vacation or to deal with the, that people's problem.
Does his employer pay for his vacation? His vacation time. So, he wants double pay for vacation, that's, that's what I'm asking right there.
But if, if he had to take two days of vacation, Clayton, you know, something like this, instead of fishing. going fishing?
Yeah, I understand that, but also, you know.
I'm assuming you're bringing us some vacation there. I didn't answer your question.
And there was nothing wrong with his home?
Right.
No, it didn't breathe in the house, but I just think we should be fair with, I know how I would feel if I was out there for three days and I was being told it was my problem and it turned out not to be my problem.
Yeah, I'm just asking, I just wanted to make sure that that's what he's wanting, his two days.
I'm not sure what he's wanting, but, you know, certainly we make that condition point.
And we're looking at how much?
It's right at $2,000.
That's total for Badger, for E and C. I just think it's fair.
Right. We made the mistake we made, right?
I do too.
No, I'd expect the same thing.
You know, our guys went out and did what they normally do to see if there's a problem and didn't indicate we have to.
I think that's a consensus.
Working on completing a couple of hearings, I see.
Shall we go into the subject here? And we'll go on to our public hearing. Number one, public hearing for public, for special event liquor license, opinion free liquor and wine tasting. Anybody have any comments or concerns?
This is one big thing, right?
Yeah, it's just one big thing, in fact, it only has two hours.
Two hours, yeah.
And that's your snore bills, I believe.
For purposes, sir.
Yeah, come stand and tell me that.
You want, you want?
Sure, come right in.
Oh, you know, over the years, I've had a whole handful of people ask me to do that, and I thought I wanted to do it on a regular basis, and once I opened it up to find out all the stuff you have to do to get it perfect, it's kind of a, almost a pain, but just, I talked to the owner of Two Rivers Winery in Grand Junction, and he's more than happy to come up and do a wine tasting. It has its, you guys are probably not familiar with the rules, but the servings are, I think, one ounce or less, and they're only allowed so many per person. There's no meat.
And none of this, none of this is paid, right?
It's all free. It always, it has to be passed through.
Right.
Yeah.
We bring water.
And just to do, get people to try their local, local wine and sell some, yeah, sell some where they're in. It's basically that. Anything else, Joe?
Okay.
You don't need anything else?
I don't think so. We're gonna, I'll hang up, I have an accident I want later in the meeting, if you want to stick around and make sure, see if it passes.
Let's do that.
Okay. Item B, second public hearing to consider the final plan of the West Brandy major subdivision consisting of two industrial lots totaling fourteen point one four acres and fourteen residential lots consisting of seventy three point five five acres and eight point one acres of road right away and subdivision improvement agreements. Any questions or concerns from the public or anybody in the council? Okay, moving on. Second reading, Board is number six seventy-five of the town ring to designate the land use which is zoning, and amend the town ring to zoning map as pertains to the Real Mesa Resources Incorporated, West Brandy subdivision, lots number three through sixteen from industrial zone district to country zone district. Again, anybody in the public have anything to say? No, anybody in the council?
Did he say three, three sixteen or three nine sixteen?
Three through sixteen.
Okay, I guess we'll move on. Peter, we'll go back to you. I'll finish your report.
In your packets, you've probably noticed that letter in there from the preparation department that you're, I contacted Tim, assumed they got the letter, well, short text, I got the letter, and he contacted me, he was out of town, I think he just got back on Friday, so we're going to try and get together, I want to find out what the purpose of the letter was and determine the next steps. I'm sure the board is, the two boards are going to be involved in next steps. So I don't have anything more to report, I haven't heard back from Tim yet, and I'm just trying to get feedback, I'm not that big of a, so I would say that I'm, in the past, in comments that I've heard in the past, that I would think that some of the things they might be looking for is if we were to beat the parks over the direction, they might want us to propose, or they might want to propose that we complete certain cattle improvements before we visit, you know, it's like buying a house, I guess they're evaluating on that, at that type of format and take care of some of the efficiencies before they take ownership, but I don't know, I'm speculating. I would also maybe speculate that they might not want to have a park, I mean, they've voiced that on several occasions, and I think that's kind of edict, and dealing with the summer, traveling through there and trying to make a post, and so I, again, I don't know, but I know that's some of the things I've heard in the past, so. On Friday, we're having the employee appreciation luncheon, and certainly I'd like to have all of you there, if you can be there, move the tube, and that's kind of our.
Is it the fire train?
That's the fire train.
Do you need any help setting up for that, Peter, or no?
No, it'll all take care.
Do we need any ice and coolers or whatever you do that? I've got plenty.
Sorry.
Pretty typical.
If you guys need some ice, we know.
Is everything provided or do we need to bring something?
Everything should be provided.
Bring a three up plate.
Everything. I don't know if you all know this, but on Monday is the holiday, kind of holiday president's day, so the office is where we're close. But you can actually hold me, I work 24 hours a day. I'm up here. Might mention that the, we were talking about this a little bit before, before the meeting, but natural gas sales were at a record level in the April, and for good reason, because January was recorded as one of the coldest Januaries we've had, at least in the last 12 years that I have information on. So at one point, the average temperature, by the second week of January, in this building that they ran from, what year did this happen?
It's like right when the cold started.
Yeah. So you got the coldest snap on that, that one month representation of that building. So anyway, about just under thirty-four thousand CCF units went through the system during that month, and we did have some calls about people's bills and thinking that their meters were skewed and.
They had this boat without a line run through. Your meters are very, very cold morning, yeah.
Is that, is that possible?
Apparently. What was that though? My meter, my gas meter? Got water or something, it froze off and I had no gas.
Oh my gosh.
A lot of water in the first of all. Joe, it's okay to say you forgot to pay the bill.
Also, I might mention that the price of the natural gas and the spot price that we were able to receive in addition to our contract price was phenomenal. I mean, the spot price was just over $3 and it'd be due, and so that helped, I think, a little bit, you know, lessen the blow for some people. Unless you have driveways that indicate, indicate non-revenue, so. Anyway, also, I'm taking a few days off, leaving right after the luncheon on Friday in Hawaii, and I'm heading to Phoenix for a few days. I'll be back on Thursday, the following week.
So is this 24/7 still a point?
Yeah. Well, it's always not. Maybe I'm vibrating, but it's always not. Also, I don't think we have to commit right now, but we always, it would be nice to determine who's going to attend the CML annual conference this year, get our bookings in early, if you want to commit to that, that's coming up June eighteen through twenty-first. I just got notice about today, and publication, and we can start, once we determine who's all going, and we can make that final reservation, so. Any council members that want to attend, for sure it's unveiled.
Probably will be able to.
I think I'll leave, I'm not sure the date that I leave, but I think it's fifteen.
I volunteer, Grant.
Okay, you might be thinking about that, anybody between now and next meeting?
What was the date?
Eighteen through twenty.
You and I think twenty, twenty-first.
Is that weekend?
For new members, it's a great opportunity to pick up some, some coordination classes with other council members around the state. It's a pretty hectic and busy conference if you really take advantage of the opportunities that they put out there. And stay forward, some of Gerald Ford's going to be one of their keynote speakers this year, so. I mentioned, sales tax was up over last, over 2011, seventeen and a half percent in 2012. Good part of that was one company in particular, we had some large sales that generated, but that was actually sixteen point two percent over 2008, which was, you know, a fairly active year that year, things were starting to decline a little bit. And smaller mill, I think, so last time we wanted to mention, we, it seemed like two weeks ago, we were getting a fair number of complaints from all different areas, but, you know, very understanding for the most part, you know, we just got kind of bunched up in a few areas. The guys, I think, are going to break down, catching up over time, and we've got a few areas around town, but one of the areas that they want to talk about, I think, going into next season, is how we deal with vehicles and trailers and boats and motorhomes that park on the street and never move for the entire, the entire season, what that does to try and maintain some of these streets where we have, you know, we get down to one lane traffic on some of those streets when we just, you know, we're getting to the point where we just can't move.
Well, don't we have something like trailers can't park on the streets a certain amount of time?
Unlicensed, can't get on the street. I'm not aware.
Motorized stuff like that?
We do have, yeah, exactly. If it's, if it doesn't, if it can't start, if it doesn't move, if it's not operational, you can, you can move it on the street. If it's an obstruction, you know, theoretically, we'd try and ask them to move the vehicle.
Well, maybe we can try to announce the lead for them.
Well, we went, we went through something like this, and a lot of us talking about, is it ill dressed up here?
Ill dressed is terrible.
Yeah. And there's campers and stuff that, like I say, they don't move.
Yeah, there's a dumb street up there, that's one of the.
We had a lot of discussion over that, and I don't think we have a resolution.
It's still like some of the alleys we guys stand on where we've got enough parking now, you know, those people park in the alley, but it's a point where they can't move out of there either, and they need some help, so we have to go with the waters and move that equipment.
Well, that's understandable, because we've asked them not to park out there.
Right, and we used to have narrow areas that are, that are hard to maintain. Anyway, just.
We've had lots of snow, it's hard to deal with that snow. You get to avoid or break, but.
But I mean, even, even beyond snow, I mean, even look at like sweeping in the summer, and I, I mean, it's cars on the street altogether, or you do.
Well, the other issue that they'd like to talk about is, you know, a lot of people have blades with four-wheelers and pushing piles around town. It gets to the point where a blade can't actually, can't move, it can't all out of the street to the wood, but it needs to be moved because of the piles they're setting there. And, you know, some of our group would, would like to just turn that blade and fifty percent of the snow goes here, fifty percent here, and go from gutter to gutter, and then you deal with it under property once it's there. And, you know, back to the point where we were eight, we had eight-foot bunkers before you go to the gutter that weren't moved there for a while, and we've had so much snow, it got behind, so. And then I got a press on it, the blades can't deal with that, so we can't go off the motor and break it loose. Anyway, it's.
Well, and it's not as cold as it's been too, I mean.
I don't think I've heard as many, and it wasn't bad, but I don't think I've heard as many complaints in the last two or three weeks.
You said something about four-wheelers though, did you?
Yeah. The guys are talking about the four-wheelers pushing these piles onto the street and creating these large obstructions on the street, and, and so then their blades move out and around those, and it leaves quite a bit of snow when.
So you're saying out of private driveways and what?
Out of drives, sidewalks, you name it. I know, I know, for mine in particular, I, you know, because I know they don't want it to street, I blow everything back in my yard, including my driveway, you know, and I know there are areas of town that's pretty impractical, that's difficult to do, so I'm, I'm not sure what the answer to that is, but.
It's not, I mean, I, I think what we were like, how the sidewalks might all be, all the way over the mailbox, if people can walk to the mailbox.
Yep. Well, the bad part is, is you get, like, Peter, he'll, he goes by and does the driveway and then come by with the plow and then blow all that right back off the sidewalk again, and people will check about that, I mean.
Blacketers come over to me and scream about that, and I say, hey, everybody takes their turn in the barrel, we all got to move that snow back under property. I had it happen to me one time, two or three times in a row about that, pretty soon I asked the guys, are you targeting mayor?
Well, I don't think this is a normal year. You know, we have had a snow melt since it snowed the first time.
Dealing with horrible last year. And the problem goes away in about thirty days and away.
Snow melt? We just have snow, it's not like so. Yours gets up about six, I think he's up to shelf. I just, I think that both sides of it need to be thankful, we had something there, and we're both trying to make our part and not get upset about anything.
Right.
You know, it was only three months out of the year, we just, you might as well just start going, get over it.
Hey, we didn't have any last year.
Yeah.
I do think we need to address people who are going streets all on our own.
That alone would make a big difference.
Something on that. Can I interject something on that?
Yeah.
Even in the summer, because there's weeds growing under motorhomes that have been there for, since I started law enforcement four years ago, there are nine motorhomes that have not moved since I started, and they've sat in the same.
Are they licensed?
Yes, they, well, they weren't, but when I told them they had to be licensed, they were licensed, but as far as sweeping streets or doing any kind of maintenance on the streets, you can't.
It can be hard to please, but it'd be nice to see like a, a five day limit or something on a vehicle on the street. I mean.
Well, we have an ordinance, Brad, that says that you cannot park your vehicle on the street if it prohibits maintenance, snow removal or any, anything else. But we do have an ordinance that says that.
And I mean, I know we're gonna get people in and say, I just don't have room. I mean, you get, then you need to rent this water or something. I mean, that's part of all of it too. It might be hard to enforce, honestly. I mean, there's a time and a place for everything. You know, if you go to a motorhome out front that doesn't run, why keep it?
Well, I would react, a three day, five day limit or something. People can't do that. They should be able to remove their camper out there for loaders.
You got people staying for a week, I mean.
But, but when, when it comes to permanent part of the street, no, I have a big degree.
And some of those streets are so narrow anyway, that those big motorhomes sitting there like that, it's gonna, I mean, you can't see around them. And when you see two cars going, one car has to stop so the other can go by, so everybody's happy, it's awesome.
These, these night, they're, they're ones that, that are out on the street and out on the street.
That have not been moved.
Well, we have a little partying at work session before we.
We could put some things together. There's other towns that have like two week limits on recreational vehicles, roads and trailers and park lots.
I, I know this is gonna be a, it's gonna cost a part where we're gonna reach people mad at us, but we, we do need to address this.
Well, I mean, it's a safety issue. I mean, like hill crest, that street, you cannot see any kids, anything on that street. I lived, I used to live on that street. It was terrible. I mean, there's, you can't pass two cars on that street.
Will everybody in table, maybe in the next meeting, come in at six thirty? What do you have, Peter?
Backbeat, huh?
That'll be the February the twenty-sixth meeting.
Right.
That's okay with everybody. I'd kind of like to see if we can get something put together and have a place. Like I said, make it for your own.
Yeah, so all the time, okay?
Okay, anything else, Peter?
That's, oh, my bad.
Okay. New business, discussion of actions to approve special event liquor license, opinion free liquor, wine tasting.
I'll make the motion to approve the discussion license.
Have a motion by Brad. Second by Lane, to approve special event liquor license opinion tree. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Discussion on actions to approve the final plan for the West Brinkley Major Subdivision consisting of two industrial lots totaling fourteen point one four acres and fourteen residential lots consisting of seventy three point five five acres and eight point one eight acres of road, driveway and the subdivision improvement agreement. Any comments?
No, I'm making a motion to approve.
A motion by Clayton.
I'll say.
The second by Brad. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Discussion on actions to approve ordinance number six seventy five with the town of Brinkley designated the land used zoning and amended the town of Brinkley zoning map as pertains to the Realated Resources Incorporated. West Brinkley subdivision, lots three through sixteen from industrious zone district to count country zone district.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Clayton.
I'll say.
Second by Lane. Any further discussion?
I have one question.
Okay.
So, I, I mean, I'm okay with that, but let's say a year from now we start selling lots and people want to put up shops for industrious down there. Are they gonna be willing to be okay to come in and change it back from country to industrious? Whereas once it's done, is it done?
Well, I mean, we would have to.
I'm just, I'm just, I hate to see this go through this whole process for every single one of those lots again to change it from one back to another. That's, that's all I'm wondering.
Now, once the two industrials are, that's it?
That's the only ones that will be.
Well, that's only ones Mike's gonna change, I understand that. But let's say he sells one to me and I want to put a shop up and.
You mean a commercial shop?
Yeah, a commercial shop.
Now, well, either the way, the way it is, there's a, there's a country living, you can't beat them.
That's what I'm thinking. They come in and want us to, and ask us to change that.
Try. If they can ask, it would go before, before you folks, before you folks again to consider a rezoning, a rezoning request. But when, when we did this and when we did traffic studies and, and that sort of thing based on the industrious activity that we thought was going to be there, and I think that would have to be taken into consideration. Plus the schools out there, I know that's a concern, and some of the residents on the other side are concerned about additional traffic. So I, you know, I think that would have to be carefully considered to convert any, any more of those to industrious.
I mean, because we do, how many lots left of industrious work? I don't think I have this.
Well, they're, we're essentially full. I think we have maybe one or two left out there, but, you know, the East End is, is pretty full. And, and we have a temporary industrious, you know, or smell, not smells.
Yeah, yeah.
The pipeline, yeah, closed. That's, that's actually on residential property, residential zone property out there. And we've granted that a temporary use for, for the yard and then revert back to residential after that.
It's okay.
Okay. So we have a motion by Clayton, second by Lane. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Discussion on actions to approve financial statement for December two thousand twelve.
I'll make the motion to approve the financial statement for December.
Motion by Brad, second by Clayton. Any discussion? All in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Next item, discussion on actions to approve January December of two thousand twelve. Motion by Lane.
I'll say.
Second by Brad. All in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Discussion on actions to approve colorized EPA services, extension county audit for two thousand twelve, the now eleven thousand nine hundred ninety.
I'll make the motion to.
I just had a question. Was it last year?
I'll make the motion to approve the audit for eleven thousand nine hundred ninety-two.
Motion by Brad, second by Lane. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Informational items. We also hope for a response, appreciation of public work. And hopefully everybody can make it to the luncheon out of the fire hall for the workshop or work hall, whatever that is. Then the SIRS of two thousand twelve, you can, you ever see claims and more work from, claim, claim reports. Read those. I did. Anyway, the announcement, you guys want to all read those? Does anybody got anything else they would like to add?
Air, over here.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So be it.
Say it.
Motion second, be in terms.